will give updates to support students and community, uh, human resources. We'll work with school leaders to ensure every student has equitable access to a teacher to provide high quality instruction regardless of instructional method. They will collaborate with staff identified as high risk for COVID-19 or who live with or care for individuals to determine their best role and to navigate options. Collaborate with leaders across our district to ensure student and staff health. Safety is our top priority. Right prior to this meeting. Uh, I met with the, uh, school leaders, all of our school leaders were able to sign on somewhere out of town. But the majority were on there, uh, to make sure that we keep those lines of communication because we know always that teachers and student, teachers and, uh, school, school based staff will do the heavy lifting. And student community service will give an update on attendance expectations on our July 13th, uh, board meeting. This concludes our presentation for this evening. Thank you, President Snow, uh, Vice President Dr. Holman and members of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Dr. Logan, and thank you staff for, uh, putting together this presentation and this plan, uh, for our district, our students and our families. I will now open it up for board members, starting with Dr. Holman.
Thank you, President Snow. Thank you, Dr. Logan and the rest of the team for the incredible presentation. I can't imagine the amount of work and effort that it took for you all to, um, get this whole entire uh, schedule planned out for us and opening, um, safely and opening responsibly. And, um, Dr. Logan and I have had several conversations about, um, the plan and the fact that many of us in the board are parents and we're in the same exact predicament as, um, many of the constituents that have called in today and that we are working full time and that we also have children in the, in the district as well. And so, um, I completely understand the, the amount of stress and frustration as well, um, coming from a parent perspective, but I am certainly, uh, more than appreciative for the work that you all have put forth with this presentation. So thank you so very much. Um, with that, I do have, um, a couple of questions. And then one is more just a reiteration, um, or confirmation, um, cause I know that this came up with some of our teachers that called in and there's some teachers that also had just contacted me. So the at home portion of learning for students is not going to be anything extra for our teachers in regards to preparing additional lessons or recording themselves, teaching a lesson, all of the work that the students will be doing on the days that they are home will already be prepared for the students to, um, uh, complete like homework, I guess it would be, um, for lack of better terminology. Um, but it wouldn't be anything necessarily additional that teachers would be responsible for doing on top of their teaching, um, face to face. That's my first question. So I don't know if you want to answer that first or if I should continue on.
I'm going to let, uh, Mrs. Comine, uh, do that. We would not expect for them to be teaching and then doing video recordings simultaneously, but Mrs. Comine can answer that better than I.
Absolutely. Good evening again. Um, so just as Dr. Logan mentioned, when our students are in person with our teachers, our teachers will be teaching them in person and they will not be delivering remote learning to the students at home. Um, you also have to remember that the A through K and L through Z model means that teachers will be completing lesson plans for two to three days per week for their A through K. But then also, uh, majority of that lesson would be repeated with their L through Z students. And so that eliminates some of the planning that they would not normally have to do. Um, they would still continue to need to provide differentiated instruction, which would be for small groups or individual students, but for no more students than they're used to. We would require that teachers plan for students to do at home learning, which would be the practice and reinforcement skills. We also have a variety of printed and digital materials that should be assigned to the students while they are at home learning. Um, the Board of Education recent, recently approved, um, some digital and online materials for math and science in elementary. There are also others in all academic areas, K through 12, that should be utilized. Um, the elementary math team is currently creating some videos, um, that teachers can assign for some asynchronous learning. Um, there may be some asynchronous learning that occurs, but remember that that is not just a teacher making a video that are, those are videos that are assigned. Um, but we do expect that our teachers in person, um, are teaching our students in person and they are not instructing remotely at the same time.
Thank you so much for that information. And then my second question, um, I had a couple of parents concerned about, um, our specialists and making sure that they are still able to teach their, um, classes like art, PE, music and so on and so forth. Um, some were worried that since the days are short or since they won't have as many days to teach with students that they were, won't be losing their positions. I assure them that they wouldn't, but, um, just making sure that they are still actually able to teach during specials and that our kids are actually still receiving, um, their specialist classes.
I can take that question as well. Um, yes, specialists will still continue to be teaching. Um, they will be written into the daily schedule like they traditionally are. They too are working with some teachers to, um, develop and revise curriculum guides, um, for all three of the instructional models. Um, they are also taking, um, safety and responsibility into consideration. Just a quick example of that today, um, in speaking with, um, Laura Peach, our library teaching and learning consultant. Um, at the secondary level, students usually go to the library, um, and we would just reverse that practice where, um, there would be some type of communication method with books and materials that the students would require. And the library staff would deliver those materials to the classroom to help eliminate those transitions. Um, but to answer your question, yes, we will still continue to have specials.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. I appreciate.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Holman or Ms. Knight.
Um, thank you, President Snow, and thank you, Dr. Logan and the staff for this presentation tonight. Um, it was extremely informative. Um, I appreciate the thought put into the physical and the behavioral health of all of our students. Um, I do have a few questions and if it was already mentioned, I apologize because I've also been trying to take notes. Um, my first question is, is how will, um, attendance or truancy be treated, um, going forward with the model? And then, um, I heard Mr. Thomas mentioned the expression program, which sounds wonderful. I'm wondering, will all students have iPads when that program comes out? Because I think it could be really beneficial for all of the students. Those are my questions for now.
So you had an iPad, you had an iPad question, correct?
Yeah, uh, that was about, I, I heard Mr. Thomas mentioning the expression program. But I saw that it was going to be virtual. So I was just wondering would all the students have the iPads by the time program starts?
Well, I, I'll yield to you, Dr. Logan, unless you want me to go.
No, I yield to you.
All right. Um, no, so the program actually we're going to be starting actually this Wednesday. Um, and so, uh, well, it'll be the, the next three weeks, uh, that we'll be going through the program. And so we're, we're working with primarily our secondary students and well, the, the expectation is that, uh, those students, uh, have their, their same technology, their devices that we gave out to them, um, over the, uh, spring. And so that's what we're hoping that they're utilizing. And so it's going to be a quick turnaround. We wanted to make sure we were giving the kids a, a, an opportunity more relevant in timing, uh, to make sure that they got, uh, got a chance to get themselves heard. So not the iPads quite yet, uh, but some of them have iPads, but it won't be the ones that the district is necessarily going to be rolling out.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
They also can use their, this is a, it's, um, this, this, the, um, their phones will work well in this format for, for them as well. Um, we also are having a rally for the students. I believe it's July 17th. Our students are having a rally at TAC. Um, so, uh, we look forward to that as well. So thank you to Mr. Thomas and his team. And Dr. Sturba is involved in that too. So I'm, I'm not sure how, I think, I don't know, the social distancing piece or something, but, uh, thank you for, um, facilities and all of that. So thank you.
Thank you. Do you have additional questions, Ms. Knight? Go ahead.
Well, my other question was about, um, how they would handle attendance and truancy going forward. And then I also was wondering, especially with the numbers of COVID-19 be, being as disproportionate as they are in South Omaha. I was just wondering, um, was that really taken into consideration is all I've been hearing from teachers from Mars and whatnot. So I wanted to ask that question too.
Absolutely. And is one of the reasons why we are in a three, two model because we see that not just in that particular zip code, although I've heard from several teachers there who, um, really were looking for a more all virtual model, actually in most of South Omaha. Uh, and so it's not the only hot, hot zip code in our area. Um, but, um, that was certainly taken into account and the real need for social distancing and to, uh, make sure that we keep students and staff as safe, um, as safe as possible. Ms. Knight, I'm going to defer the attendance question for the July 13th meeting because we have some, uh, uh, more processes that we need to work out. We will be taking attendance on the days when students are, are, uh, working virtual. And again, I keep reiterating that we're hoping that we can go to a hundred percent. Uh, so this is not a forever, um, forever, uh, scenario, hopefully. Um, we're hoping that we will go in that direction and not in the opposite direction, to be honest. So, um, um, but those will be worked out and we'll have an update. Ms. Utterback will have an update and, uh, at the July 13th meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Logan.
Thank you, Ms. Knight, Dr. Logan. Ms. Cassidy.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Um, I want to start with just kind of echoing what's been said already. I want to definitely thank Dr. Logan and staff, uh, that presentation. I think it was very clear and concise and hopefully it cleared up a lot of, a lot of areas that families were really worried about and have sent emails to us about and have been very stressed about. Hopefully they feel a little bit more at ease after seeing the presentation and hearing some of the details. I know I do as a parent. Um, as Dr. Holman stated, we are, a lot of us are in the same boat. We are parents as well. We are working parents. I looked at this plan and also questioned how I was going to do this. Um, you know, it's difficult, but like Dr. Logan just stated, we are really hoping that this is not a plan for very long. Um, this is temporary. We hope we will get through this and things will go back to, we hope very soon and they'll go back to normal. But, um, this plan is not perfect and there is no plan that can be perfect during this pandemic. It's been a struggle throughout, but I commend district staff for, um, being very thoughtful in coming up with these different options for our families. I think that there is a little bit of something for everyone. The three, two plan gives a little bit of a balance. Um, particularly for those people that want their child back, but maybe are not as committed to them health-wise, being back completely 100%. I think the remote option, of course, is for those families that might have, um, health issues in the home already, uh, children that are more at risk or possibly adults in the family that are at risk higher in that higher category that need to have their children home and not in the classroom. And then of course, if there are families that are just not for either of those plans, there is also the in-person option. So I believe there's a little bit of something in here for everyone. Um, I do have some questions though, although there were many, there were not many details that I don't feel were looked at. I do have just a few questions I want addressed. Um, one is kind of a simple one. It concerns the mask though to start with. So I know that we are going to, and just to kind of reiterate for the public, our students will receive five cloth masks and they will get those at like the back to school nights. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I have actually had people ask, and this seems very simple, but we all want to make a fashion statement, of course. Um, what about students that want to possibly use their own mask from home homemade or ones bought offline from different companies? Are we encouraging students to just stick with what we have provided or will there be? Can, can students use their own? I've actually been asked that, so I wanted to check.
We, um, will provide a little bit more guidance, uh, on that probably in our July 13th meeting, but at this time I would say yes. Um, we would want to make sure that they were face coverings that would be helpful, uh, for them in terms of, uh, preventing the, um, spread. But we'll provide a little bit more guidance in July, but I would say overall that's going to be a yes. The only exception is bandanas. Um, um, because of some of the, um, some of the, uh, implications that we could have with bandanas with, um, some affiliations that would not be, uh, we would not want to reinforce in schools.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Um, I also, I'm assuming that you, as you just stated, that some of the mask issue will be addressed a little more at the July 13th plan or meeting. Um, I have read a little bit from some other plans that have come out from other school districts across the Midwest. Um, I do hope, and I've had people ask, um, will there be some clear guidance on whether or not there'll be like different breaks given for each class, you know, different classes will get so many breaks per day. Um, certain times that students will be allowed to take off mask. I'm assuming all that guidance will be provided to us at the July 13th meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
And it may have to be, that may have to be updated, um, at the August, the first meeting in August because it's, it's so rapidly changing.
Okay.
You know, so we'll give it, yeah, we may need to update that and we'll give a brief, um, uh, overview, but, um, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, I know that a large issue for parents obviously is the daycare issue. And if they do choose the three, two remote, three, two plan, um, if they will be able to find daycare or find different, uh, kids club. Is kids club something that will still be functioning at the schools that do have kids club currently? Or will those be eliminated?
We'll be finding, when we, uh, have that information, we'll make that available. And, uh, I know that, um, Ms. Utterback, uh, met with, um, um, Mrs. Uh, uh, Co- Cohen Dunning, uh, and also with, uh, Mrs. Addison from Collective for Youth. So we hope, we hope to be able to be able to share, uh, the options that'll be available. And indeed, indeed, we'll be meeting with all of our partners around that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And my last question, um, the plan specifically talks about K through 12. It addresses, I think you, and it actually was stated as a district wide plan. And I did not see anything really for our preschool portion. Does this plan include our preschool? I know in one of the slides, it actually was listed as addressed preschool special ed, but is this plan, does it have anything to do with or encompass those students in our preschool? I know several schools have preschool locations. Some are the parent play, parent A programs. Does, do any of these models address preschool?
You know, I, we, I typically always forget to say preschool, but, uh, yes. And as a matter of fact, we, um, initially had not gotten the, um, iPads for preschool. And I mean, there's a lot because of screen time.
Right.
But I would like to, uh, um, uh, give, um, kudos to, uh, Melissa, uh, Comine and her team who realized that. And so we have now corrected, corrected that, uh, to make sure that they, uh, would be a part of, of that, um, of, of, of that piece of it. And yes, it does include, um, the preschool.
Okay. I just wondered if preschool is included in obtaining, um, and receiving the iPads. You know, if that, if the three, two plan would work for the preschool level, just with their age, you know, virtual. They would need instruction, obviously on the virtual as opposed to more of our students that would be able to just have their iPad work on per se homework and not have to have someone, uh, facilitating that with them. So I just kind of wondered about preschool.
Yeah, but we, I'll get you some more information about that. Um, and we'll give you information in July about preschool.
Okay, great. That's all I had at this point. Thank you.
Ms. Rine.
Uh, thank you, President Snow. First, I just want to say, uh, thank you to the staff. Of course, this is, um, I know really stressful and we're trying to come up with a solution that will help save lives, but also get our kids some education. Um, I also wanted to know that the re, part of the reason why we're in this predicament is because our state and county leadership did not take the initiative that they needed to take in closing down our city. So now we are in this situation that is difficult and is not going to make a lot of people happy. And, um, we're having to, to make these decisions in real time. So I first just wanted to say that. Um, second, one of my questions-
Thanks for acknowledging it.
Yes. Um, one, well, myself and many of the, of our board members, um, signed on asking the city to close down and that would have helped us in this situation. Um, but my question, I have a few questions around testing. Um, do kids and families have access to COVID testing through the district? And then if we're looking at that, what's the reliability of that testing? And then further, do, um, staff members also have that, um, that access to testing?
We have a partnership with One World and with, um, Charles Drew. And COVID testing is available at both of those locations. I cannot speak to the, um, um, level right today. The last time I talked to, uh, the two, um, leads, uh, was about a week ago. And, uh, they appear to be in pretty good shape. In addition to the, the, um, COVID testing that would be available to our young people, um, through our school-based health centers. Uh, they are also supporting immunization clinics to get school up and going. Five months we've gone with kids not getting immunizations, probably six, closer to six, because this started, um, and so we have some immunization catch-up. And so they're working to, um, we're actually going to re, we don't normally have our school-based health centers open in, in the summer, but they're going to reopen the week of the 13th, I believe, uh, so we can get our children, uh, caught up on, uh, immunizations. Also want to thank Dr. Simonson because, um, who was with us last week, pediatrician, uh, the chair at, uh, UNMC. Uh, uh, because her, her group, um, and she named them, but I can't remember the name, but it's a group of, it's a pediatric group. Um, was, um, she was getting with them to support any efforts that, uh, One World and, um, I'm sorry, and Charles Drew needed, uh, as well as a campaign, uh, working with Jeremy Mascol and working with the campaign to let our families know that they, we, they need to get immunized if they have missed immunizations, uh, during, um, this time.
Okay. Um, I have a lot of questions, but I'll try to space them out. Um, uh, just, it's kind of a comment and a question in regards to masks. They're required, but how are we really going to enforce that? And one of the thoughts that came from some, um, teachers that I've spoken to was could it be reflected in the code of conduct for this year to say like it, you know, it's required to wear a mask. If you have a medical condition, accommodations can be made, but then that's some, that's an extra step that parents are signing off on that. Yes, they have read that and this is something that, um, will abide by, right?
Great, great minds. Dr. McFarlane.
Nancy.
Is now exiting.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine.
Okay. Um, yes, we have not incorporated anything in the code of conduct. However, the code of conduct sits within our district handbook as well as the school information pages. And we are drafting a statement that will be in the district handbook and will be at the very front regarding, uh, expectations and how we, um, expect students. We take the direction of the CDC and the, uh, Douglas County Health Department for our rules and regulations regarding communicable diseases.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then one more, and then I'll let somebody else get in there. Um, um, around the, um, sick leave, what are we going to do in terms of the sick leave for the teachers and paras and custo- custodial staff? Um, because if they do come down with COVID, it's going to be more than the allowed PTO.
Well, let me just say this, um, thank you, Ms. Ryan, for the question. We've been already doing it since March, um, because we've had several cases. So I'll have Mr. Wakefield speak on that.
Morning, Ms. Ryan. Um, currently under the CARES Act, employ, uh, any employee who is, comes down with COVID gets 10 days of paid leave to start with. So the initial 10 days is covered by the district without, uh, dipping into their leave bank. After that, we begin to use our leave depending on what sort of medical treatment they needed.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Um, up next is Mrs. Godding.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, first of all, I understand as well that this is a challenging time and it's challenging to come up with a plan that works. First of all, what I'd like to just, um, comment on is that as we move forward, we heard from teachers, we also heard from Mr. Miller that they didn't feel as though they were a part of the process. So I would just encourage the district to include OEA and include staff as we work toward the planning for the reopening of school, because I think that's very important. I would also-
Forward, I wanted to have Mr. Wakefield, um, uh, review all the several, the several times that he met with OEA regarding the opening of school. Um, because there were many and many student, many, many engagements. So I'm going to have him, um, uh, let you know about those engagements.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Uh, Ms. Godding, in the past, approximately three weeks, I've, uh, talked with OEA about a half dozen times directly about issues directly related to reopening a school from, um, secondary schedules to going through the presentation you saw tonight with OEA prior to being posted on the board agenda.
Okay. Great. Could we, um-
Is now joining.
Could we, um, finish, take his list-
Now joining.
And give the answers and send that out to the board so that we would have a clear understanding of what, um, Mr. Miller was referring to. I think he emailed all of us during the meeting. So if we could just do that, that would be great.
If I, I'd be happy to. I, I would need to list the questions. I had not received that. I did reach out to Mr. Miller to get those this evening though.
Okay, perfect. If you have them then, or once you get them, that would be great. If you could do that, I appreciate that. Um, gonna kind of move on to a couple of other things. So I know we're talking about allowing parents to opt into that remote learning option. And it's one of the things that I've talked to my constituents about. If someone in their home has an autoimmune disorder, and I certainly can remember, um, in my own home, having a child with such a situation, and I'm not sure I would have ever even done the three, two model based on the risk of health. And so I understand those parents who don't want that and would prefer to do either the remote learning or the virtual school. Once we get through that phase of finding out how many students are wanting to participate in that, I guess I'm curious to know, first at the elementary level, I assume, and, and maybe I didn't quite understand, Mrs. Comine, the lesson plans that will be prepared for students, those will be done by the teacher in the classroom or are staff at TAC preparing those?
So teachers will prepare their own lesson plans, but we do have a group of elementary math coaches um, that are also working with some teachers because all of the curriculum guides are being rewritten. Um, and because, um, elementary math is one of those areas where, um, students are, um, most likely to retain less. Um, going into the school year, we did elect to, um, create some videos to support the priority standards and to support some of the unfinished learning. And so there will be some math videos for elementary that are created for the teachers. Uh, but the teacher would be responsible for doing their own lesson planning in person and then also providing the practice and learning activities for the students at home and at home learning. And also be the case for the remote learning, um, option as well.
Okay. So I guess the one thing that I noticed, um, as we were talking about the at-home learning, it, it relies pretty heavily on students having that independent learning. Um, they're going to be, they're going to have to do it on their own because they're not going to be connected to a larger group. And I heard so many parents talk about if my child's at daycare or I have to hire somebody or I have them play while I work at home. Um, I think that's where my biggest concern on this lies that we could do two lessons a day in math, but we all know that it's, it's that daily repetition that really helps you to retain that information. And so I think that that is one of my bigger concerns is seeing these students have to rely on their own independent study. At the secondary level, I have a different question. So if we take the students who choose to do remote learning or who choose to do virtual learning, um, and we're left with the remainder of the students, I, I would of course want everyone to be in class all the time because I tend to believe that what the- tend to believe that what the American Association of Pediatrics, um, I appreciate those comments that if you're within three feet and you have a mask on, um, your risk may not be nearly as much as not being there at all. Have we discussed at all at the secondary level, when students are not in the classroom, whether they're remote or whether they are just out on that particular day using webcams so that that student can continue to engage with that particular teacher and their peers in that classroom? And the reason I ask is my child actually participated in a class in OPS where someone from a different district in outstate Nebraska would dial in every day to be a part of that class because their school didn't offer it. That student joined up on a screen, everybody was participating and they're together. And I guess at the secondary level, I would think that that would be the direction we would want to move versus leaving them isolated and alone. Where if they could participate with their classmates in the classroom, we would see higher, um, connection from them and engagement. And I would think then they would be able to continue to retain the information that they're getting. So I guess that's, that's one of the things I'd like to see.
So I, there's, I think I have a couple of different answers for you. One I can provide and the other one I'll ask Mr. Wakefield to provide. Um, the first one is teachers are involved in writing all of the different curriculum writing and we are exploring, um, different options. And each, each grade level or level is different because of the age of the student and the developmental, uh, um, age of what they can do on their own. Um, the second piece you had mentioned around the webcams and this and that, I want, uh, to ask Mr. Wakefield to kind of talk a little bit about that, um, as far as what past practices have been and, um, what the district's thoughts are around that and with OEA.
Good morning again, Ms. Godding. Uh, in the past, we have not had cameras in classrooms and our unions have been very uh, reluctant to, uh, sign off on that and allow us to do those sorts of things. Cameras in classrooms have been limited to very specific situations, a teacher taping a lesson for a national board serve with parent prior permission, or what you're talking about is distance learning. Uh, there would be, IMS would have to get involved as far as the technology to add cameras to classrooms to do that, to make it effective. And that is something we would definitely have to work with our union on in order to make sure they're comfortable doing that.
I guess I would just ask that maybe we consider that. I think about these secondary students and the real risk that we have with them. So with the current plan and because of our block schedules, and I've heard from many parents on the block side who are very concerned that their students will only see their teacher five times a month. So even if this only goes on for two or three months, that means they're only seeing that teacher and they're engaged in that class five times during the entire month. We all know that even though in block, we say, okay, you get two lessons in that period. When it comes to things like foreign language and math, there's no way that you can teach those deep concepts um, in just that chunk. And so my concern around all of it is how do we know that we're going to be able to teach a full year's worth of curriculum when students are only present half the time? And especially at the secondary level when we don't give them that opportunity to be a part of their class. So I think that's the concern I have at the secondary level. Um, I know I've talked to Dr. Logan about that. Um, only two of our schools have traditional, so at least in those schools, um, they will see their teachers 10 times during the month. But that's twice as many times as the rest of our high schools and most of our middle schools. So I think from parents, what I would, um, what I would like to know is that the principal in that building, if they feel like, hey, the right thing to do for right now is to switch to a more traditional slash modified block, because I know we have labs, the biology, the, the chemistry, the physics, um, there's not going to be enough time in person to be able to dissect or whatever they're doing in the classroom. And that concerns me. Um, I know that when you're trying to watch a video and you're not there asking the teacher questions, it is very, very challenging. And I personally experienced that with one of my kids who, um, had calculus and the teacher was gone on medical leave for three weeks, did videos. I'm not sure that anyone during that time period was able to actually get the concept down clearly. And so that's where I'm concerned. I'm really concerned for the kids for the lack of, you know, I'm not sure what it is, but the inability to be able to have all the concepts taught throughout their entire year if they're only in class half the time. So I think those are probably, that's one of my biggest things. Um, I certainly also recognize the financial and emotional toll that is being taken on parents who are working parents who can't work remotely and just the anxiety that they're experiencing right now with what will they do with their child? And how will they know that their child is keeping up? So just some things that I think we need to be thinking about. Um, what I would like to know as well that I've been asked about is sports and after-school programs and if students aren't there all five days, how will they go to practice? How will they be transported if they rely on district transportation?
All right. Those are items to be worked out. We'll give, we'll give a, um, update on, in July 13th, on July 13th.
Okay. All right. Well, I guess I would leave it with, I would appreciate it if we could work toward webcams. I, of course, am fully supportive of five days, um, a week of school. And so, um, I've heard that definitely from my constituents and, and that's where I'm going to stay, um, at. But, um, until we get there, I would appreciate the opportunity to have us visit with OEA about webcams at the secondary level. And then just to try to figure out how we could get K5 into the buildings, five days a week. I know that many other districts around the country are at least working toward that. I know that in talking to you, Dr. Logan, that was where you wanted to be. Um, I recognize we have a lot of kids in our schools, but as we evaluate who chooses to do remote learning, um, there may be, I, I would think that opportunity. So that's, thank, um, all the questions I have for right now.
Thank you. We agree a million percent. We want to get all of our cherubs back as soon as possible. And as soon as we can get our, uh, kin-, our kindergarten through fifth grade or pre-K, thank you, Mrs. Cassidy, through fifth graders back, uh, in school, the, uh, sooner the better. We really wanted to start there. Mr. Mr. Snow, Mr. Smith has had his hand up for quite some time. I feel bad.
I was going to call on him next. He was, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, um, thanks. I appreciate it. Just, um, a pretty basic question. I think I've kind of heard a little bit about it before, but it was stated about modifying schedules to reduce, reduce transitions. What does that mean exactly for the secondary level? Will it be more towards a block schedule or just kind of some clarity on that, please?
The transition piece?
Yeah.
We, um, I worked with our, our middle schools mostly, uh, really worked hard to get their transitions down. In our high schools, uh, we were working to get, some schools already had block scheduling and some transitioned. Uh, our largest high schools, Mr. Smith, we weren't able to do it. Um, the issue is when you have 2,800, 3,000 kids, um, you run out of space, right? We just, we, we, I mean, they, we tried it like 10 ways to Sunday. And, um, the, the principals, and I'll thank, uh, um, Ms. Fullmore and, uh, Ms. Christopherson, because they were like on a hamster wheel trying to get it done. And then they came back and said, we can't do it. And I said, yeah, you can. And, um, we, so we really tried to get those transitions down. But what we found, Mr. Smith, and it's such a good point, was that students were going to end up losing classes. And so, um, once we decided to go with the three-two family model, we decided that we, that was just not going to be something that, um, we were going to be able to do. It was literally a lack of space, um, that, and it, they kept saying it to, uh, their superintendent and I was listening sort of, but I, it just clicked and, and I will thank, like to thank, uh, Mr. Kano and Dr. Bennett for, uh, of course advocating for their students. Like they're supposed to, but we, we did really try. We just, we couldn't get it done, um, with that amount of overcrowding.
But I know in some of the other schools, like there was a mention of one hallway being, going one way and then stairwells marked one way for up and down. And so those things have been put in place already, right?
Um, yeah, uh, Mr. Priestman, um, from printing was, uh, uh, sent all the signs out today, uh, for folks and will be, um, um, thanks to Dr. Sturbin and the team, uh, uh, there's all kinds of signs that people have. It's all branded signs, uh, uh, that folks will have to get their school year started.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you, Dr. Logan. Um, pertaining to this topic, are there any additional questions or comments from board members?
I have one. Can you hear me, Mark?
Yes, Ms. Crackey. Can you speak a little bit louder?
Yeah, I'll try. Um, I, I heard a lot of things tonight and some of it was new to me and some of it I presumed was going to happen. And with that and the emails that, that just kept coming, uh, I don't feel that I'm completely informed as a board member to speak on the issue, to answer the questions. For me, July 13th is a long way away. And I would like some kind of a board meeting just with the board, a special workshop or something to go through this. And if we've had other questions coming up for us to answer them. Because I think the presentation that was given after the people wrote a lot of their messages might clear up some of their questions, maybe a lot of them, because things were said in the district presentations that the parents had talked about and asked about. And I think it's unfortunate that it, it did not go in a reverse order for them to get to, uh, ask their questions after the presentation. So, uh, it's a little bit confusing. And so maybe it was confusing to them too. Um, and, you know, it's monumental in what it is that we are trying to do in going back to school. And we know that. And, and we know we don't want anyone to get sick on any, anywhere. So that's a big consideration, but I still would like another special meeting for us as a workshop for the board members who wish to attend.
Thank you, Ms. Crackey, uh, for your suggestion. Um, Dr. Holman and I will talk to the superintendent and other board members, uh, and we will get back to you with your, uh, suggestion on there.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Uh, any other questions, Ms. Ryan? You said you had a list. Are you ready to go back at your list?
Oh, my list. Um, let's see. Um, yeah, I guess, um, one of the other questions and some of these, um, have been sent from OEA as well. Um, so we'll probably get those addressed in the future, but, um, to ask now is is there some sort of community effort to provide childcare for those teachers that will have children at home? And, and if you're exploring those options, what are they? And then, um, if not, could we start looking into that?
Ms., uh, Ms., uh, Ryan, we started something today with, uh, two of our, um, partners. And so we'll give you an update as soon as we have one. This update may come before the 13th meeting, but, um, uh, we'll give up the board and update. And of course, obviously we will let our community know, but we started, uh, that the, um, the administration started those, um, discussions today with some of our community partners.
Great. Thank you. And then my last one is in regards to staffing. Um, we know that we have, uh, a teacher shortage, sub shortage. Uh, what is the, like, game plan around what we're going to do with that, especially if one of our teachers gets sick with COVID or their kid is sick or whatever? Um, do we have a plan in place for that?
We are working on that. Uh, we'll give you an update, uh, in July and then one in early August.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you, President Snow. Um, I just have a couple more I thought of as I sat here. Um, the first one, kind of funny, I am actually sitting here and I am having a glass of iced tea and I just looked down at my coaster that was actually made by a Career Center student. So it made me think about that tonight. Um, Career Center students, how will any of these models work for students that are taking those types of classes and enrolled at our Career Center? I, I just, like I said, I didn't even think about it until I looked down at my beautiful coasters. Is that, I, I don't even know if that's been, I'm assuming that's been looked at, but I just thought I'd address that this evening.
Yes, sure has. We, um, are working on a plan. Not for that one, not just for that program, but also for the zoo program and for the UNMC program, for the UNO middle college program. We have several of them that are in a, um, cadre that we are, uh, working to make, uh, plans for.
Okay. Thank you. I, just like I said, just one I hadn't even thought of. Um, the last one, Ms. Ryan, thank you. You already addressed, um, bringing up substitute teachers. That was another one on my list. Uh, and this might go right into that, but, um, I know at several of our schools, we have traveling teachers that might travel. I know, for instance, um, I know of a couple PE teachers that travel from schools. Will that be eliminated? Um, or will their positions change? Will they, I just wasn't sure because of the having to travel from school to school, if that poses any further health risk? Or will that be something, as long as they're maintaining guidelines, that's still a, a go?
Hand washing, uh, wear a mask.
Sure.
Um, or a shield, uh, in the case of some, uh, PE teacher might need to wear a shield, uh, depending, um, and use hand sanitizer, wash hands, you know, coming in and out of the building.
Okay. That's good to hear for any of our traveling teachers that might have been wondering out there.
I was, I, I was itinerant my first year teaching. I went to three schools. So I, I, I know the, know the love and the pain.
Okay. Sounds great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Cassidy. Mrs. Godding?
Thank you. So I just am looking back over my list of questions as well. One of them that I have, because we're talking a lot about students who will be at home doing online activities that have been set up for them. But we also just heard tonight that the iPads won't be all in and up and running until in September. So I'm sitting here thinking, all right, what do we do for a good month with those students who don't have an iPad yet? So can somebody respond to that?
So the students that will not have iPads at the beginning of the year are, are elementary students. And so they will still have planned activities for at-home learning in a majority, and they'll have to be through print resources.
Okay, great. Thanks. I think that's important for parents to know, um, because I don't know that that's the expectation they have. And I know that from what we all experienced in the spring, we all heard it. I had a child in the system in the spring, um, who also, now I understand, could not get into teams and be with his class one day. And I was thinking, what is your problem? The internet's working. And here I sat tonight and couldn't get in. So I completely understand when we're, we had a lot of challenges, right? Nobody would say that we, we did well in the spring. But my concern is, are we going to continue to operate at that mode for elementary students? At least for the first month or so of school. And I think it's important for parents to be aware of that. What I asked, um, earlier today from Dr. Logan is that if you could give us a weekly update to all board members on staffing and how many open positions and certificated staff were at every week so that we have a good understanding of where we're headed. I would also like to see a weekly number on the students who are choosing remote, who are choosing the virtual school, and then how many students we anticipate, um, based on the three-two model. I've certainly heard from some of my constituents and, um, I'm, I'm guessing some will make other choices. Um, and so what we need to know is how many students will we really be serving in each of the three categories that the school, uh, that the district is planning and starting with? So if you could provide that to us weekly, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely. Actually, Absolutely. Actually provided, gave that last week to, uh, Dr. Holman had asked for it, uh, to the board officers. And I will certainly, uh, forward it to the, um, board members, give an update. I will say that we actually are, are looking at our certificated employees different as a result of our strategic plan. We look at it by school. The goal is for every school to be, uh, staffed at 95% or higher, uh, with certificated staff. We currently have all but six schools, uh, staffed at 95% or higher for certificated employees. Uh, it's a better way to look at it because you can hide data. And what one of the things we don't want is, uh, some of our, our, our schools that, um, had some staffing have had perennial staffing issues, uh, to not be, um, highlighted and to be hidden in district-wide data. So, uh, we'll certainly, we'll share that with the entire board. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Pearlman.
Thank you. Um, I, I can really only think of one question now. It probably would, uh, potentially affect elementary schools more than, um, middle schools or high schools. But in the, the rare case where, uh, an alphabetical split is an anomaly, where 70 or 75% of a, a grade is, uh, skews to one side of the alphabet, will there be any ability for a, a school to kind of smooth that out? Or will it just be an anomaly that's dealt with?
We have to look at those on a case-by-case basis. We already see one. Field Club has one that we already can see that's pretty, um, significant. Um, but we would look at those as a, on a case-by-case basis. The goal is to get the classroom size down, so the lopsidedness is less of an issue, uh, but it's certainly for socialization is, is, could be really super important.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Mr. Pearlman. Um, any other questions from the board?
Real quick, uh, President Snow, Amanda. Um, one more kind of quick question, I guess. Um, if there's somebody within a classroom that tests positive for COVID or, uh, shows signs of COVID, um, what is the action step for containment and for our students and what happens then?
Uh, thank you for the question. A couple of things. Uh, first of all, um, uh, one of the things that Dr. Poor has, uh, been speaking with our team about is it will depend on the level of masking. So if everyone has a face covering on in the class, um, uh, there would be, uh, a protocol that would be less invasive, I'll say that, in terms of, uh, that student may, that student obviously would be home. Um, um, there would be, uh, tracing that's, that's done. The central nursing, uh, unit is let, uh, we let, uh, Mrs. Boda, Boda know. And then a determination is made based on the circumstance for the, um, for, for the child. Um, so that it, 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 it is not a one-size-fits-all. Uh, so, um, we are, we have several different, um, models, but none of the models yet have included the, um, use of face coverings. And so we'll, we'll, we'll have that, uh, for the board to review, uh, probably, uh, more at our August meeting than our July meeting. Um, we have already dealt with this quite a bit with staff, so we have some, um, experience. And I will say, early on, when we had them in March, everybody had to go home, right? Because we, what we weren't in, in, in that mode. Um, so it depends on the, um, and a more recent one that we had, uh, the, um, uh, people were working outdoors, so nobody was covered up because they, but they still all had to go home because we had, I think, three out of five, uh, positive in that, in that, in that scenario.
Okay, looking forward to more information. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that is so evolving and it depends, it really does depend, um, um, as she explained it. And, uh, Lori can give more, uh, Mrs. Boda can give more, more detail in July about that. But it really is evolving, um, from what we, um, see. But everyone was definitely notified and then from there on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Mr. Pearlman, is your hand still raised or an additional question?
No, it's not. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Alrighty, well, this was an information item about the, uh, safe to reopen schools, uh, for the district, uh, to protect our students, uh, our families, their families, as well as our staff. Um, and I want to again give, uh, a shout out and kudos to the staff that have been working on this. Uh, these plans and these, uh, different solutions to make sure that we can help our families, um, uh, have a safe reopening of school and also make sure our kids can learn, uh, and learn safely. I know you've only had three months and I just want to say thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Moving on to our next item on the agenda, which is D1A, going back up there. It's the recommended 2020, 2021 calendar changes.
And, uh,
Mr. Snow, this is the, uh, no change, no adjustments have been made since this was presented to the board before. Um, this still reflects the early start only. Um, or I shouldn't say only, it, it reflects the changes that Mr. Schmidt-Bonnie presented to the board at the last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Mrs. Godding, you have your hand raised?
I do. But if I'm correct, and maybe I'm not correct on this, the calendar does reflect the three-two model. Is that correct?
Uh, no, that is not correct. The, uh, calendar is the early start. It doesn't, uh, specifically mention the AKLZ model.
Okay, so I'm a little confused from what I was shown this morning. So that's not what's showing up?
No, the, um, what you were shown this morning was the attachments on D2A. That calendar that you were, it was the family three-two model that was presented, um, to you this morning is on D2A.
Okay, is that under the resolution, D2A?
The Responsible Return to School Plan?
Okay, 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 okay. So the calendar that we're voting on today, the only thing we're voting on as a change from what we all have known in the past is starting one week earlier and having three weeks for the holiday break. Is that correct?
It was the presentation that Mr. Schmidt-Bonnie provided you in the past, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. And where, are we not voting on, will we be voting on the three-two model? Will we be voting on that calendar at any time in the future?
No.
No.
Okay, so, so essentially, the district is moving forward with that plan and, um, and that's not going to be a Board of Education vote. Is that then correct?
Correct. The, the calendar, which we traditionally, uh, vote on as the board, that is what we're voting on today. The plan is as if, uh, a school has their block schedule or has all seven periods and it is under the purview of the superintendent, uh, and the administration on how to roll out schools, uh, in a safe manner.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. Thank you. There's been a lot of questions from, I know my constituents and others about, um, what the role of the Board of Education is in this. So, um, so we're just, for clarification for the public, we are simply voting on the days, not the format of those days or the scheduling of schools at the block and traditional. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Alrighty, well, this is an action item for the calendar change. I will entertain a motion to approve item D1A.
I am moved to approve the changes to the 2020, 2021 school year calendar.
There's a motion by Dr. Holman. Is there a second?
Second, Ricky Smith.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a quick question.
Yes, Mr. Pearlman.
Um, I'm wondering, what is the reasoning behind a extended winter break and, um, adding, um, an additional week, uh, the week of fifth through the eighth of January and 11th through the 15th of January?
To the second semester, to the first semester?
Yes.
That is to balance the number of days in the, in the, uh, quarter, in the cycle. I think if I understand your question correctly. I'm not, not sure I understand the question correctly.
Well, okay, so school's starting one week earlier. And then there's, uh, winter break is an additional week. You know, typically it would be the 21st of December.
Plus one four zero two two one two six six two seven.
Is now exiting.
Uh, so, starting one week earlier and then adding a, a early week of winter break, the 14th through the 18th.
Correct.
Um, well, what's the thinking behind that versus perhaps having winter break the 28th through January 8th, just moving that back and finishing up the semester in December?
There, there really, there, there's not any, there's not a, a reason except for that, based on the information that we got and looking at the, um, schedules for higher ed. We, higher ed has been a really good predictor for what's going to happen. And so we were looking at the higher ed models.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Pearlman. Mrs. Godding?
So I do have a question on that and, and it's not such a big deal for the elementary students. But, um, having had high school students, having spent the last 10 years as a high school parent, are we saying that the break would end, the semester break would end January 15th? And my concern on that is taking finals and most kids want to be done when they go on break. Um, I know I hear from teachers that have said in the past, when we had this practice years ago, that it was a challenge to come back and then take finals. Is, is that what we're going to be doing?
Yes, that's correct.
And so how have our secondary teachers responded to that change as far as those concerns? What have we, what have we asked them about that? And how they will deal with, you know, working with the students to make sure they don't fall behind?
Mr. Wakefield, I know that we issued a joint statement, uh, OEA and the school district. Can you talk a little about that with this calendar change?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Logan. Uh, we did meet with OEA about the, uh, projected calendar change and talked, uh, with them. The, the, um, the end of first semester, sorry, I lost my words. The end of first semester falling in January was not a large item of conversation and not a concern that was raised at that time. Uh, we were focused on the three weeks of winter break and the potential of getting as many instructional days in the first semester as possible and trying to balance the quarters. Uh, more teachers were concerned with quarter, each quarter being unbalanced than with, uh, where the actual semester breaks fell.
I know that we issued a joint statement, uh, OEA and the school district. Can you talk a little about that with this calendar change?
We had a meeting with OEA about the, uh, projected calendar change and talked, uh, with them.
Somebody has, is watching, um, so if they could mute?
The end of first semester.
Yeah, be perfect.
The first semester falling in January was not a large item of conversation and not a concern that was raised at that time.
Everyone make sure your mute button is on.
There, I got it.
Perfect. Alrighty, Mrs. Godding, have your, have your questions been answered?
Kind of, I guess. I wonder how much thought was put into that from the standpoint of the impact to students and whether or not it wouldn't have been better to have wrapped up finals before break in order to avoid that. What I think for a lot of kids is stress and anxiety when they have to come back after winter break. And for teachers to try to spend in time reteaching concepts after a three-week break when they could be moving on to new material. So I guess that's, that's a concern I have and I don't know, um, I, I will vote for the calendar, but it's a concern I have and maybe one that could be looked at from the secondary standpoint as far as trying to help our students who are already going to experience challenges with what's going on before they come back from break. I don't know. I, I would appreciate that, though.
Thank you, Mrs. Godding. Um, I'm sure the staff is taking notes and will take that into consideration on there. This is an action item, um, and the motion by Dr. Holman, second by Mr. Smith, if I'm correct.
Right.
Any other discussion? Mr. Pearlman? Oh, you turned, your screen came on, so that's why I assumed. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Godding?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Crackey? Pearlman?
No.
Ryan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Knight?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Seven aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, moving on to item D1B, uh, Resolution 20004, recommending face coverings to preserve public health and protect the district's students, employees, families, and visitors. So this is a resolution. Let me pull this up here. I think, Ms. Ryan, you had some questions about, uh, if students can wear their own,
Plus one four zero two three nine zero zero nine five six.
Is now exiting.
And at, at the bottom of there, it talks about allowing, in this resolution, allowing students to come, uh, to school with, uh, uh, face coverings, um, from home, uh, on there. And it does talk about not allowing, uh, bandanas. So this is an action item. I will hope everyone has had a chance to read this resolution. Um, this is something that is needed to allow our superintendent, to allow our staff, uh, as well as our teachers, to protect our students, uh, as well as themselves and their families and the students' families. Um, so I will entertain a motion to approve this.
Still move.
There's a motion by Mr. Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
There's a triplet of seconds. I'll give it to Mr. Pearlman. Uh, and we'll open it up for discussion. Mrs. Godding?
So the question I have here is, for students who choose not to wear a mask, are we going to require a medical note on that? Or I've heard that some districts are saying, hey, if you don't wear a mask, then you need to do remote learning. What is our policy going to be on that? I didn't really, I mean, I got all the other stuff out of the, uh, resolution, but I didn't really see that component.
Mrs. Godding, we are requiring our students and staff and visitors to wear a, a face, facial covering, um, for the protection of their health and the health of others. Uh, we are going to work through exactly how we will do that. We need to work with our, uh, school leaders, um, to, uh, determine, um, our steps. We will offer, um, remote learning for those who, uh, for whom they, they just don't want to do it. Obviously, the medical exemptions are, uh, not as difficult, um, and, and pretty clear-cut. And, um, and then obviously we have some students with special needs that we know we can provide them with other ways. Um, and so, um, as I shared earlier, we do not want to suspend students from school, um, uh, for, for this. Rather, we see it as a way that, um, our community will, um, protect ourselves, um, and we'll, we will, um, we'll put some- Um, and we'll, we will, um, we'll put some, something in it that is, feels more like a carrot, uh, than a stick. Because, um, I don't, uh, this is a more of a, this is a public health issue, um, and where it could be, some could construe it as, um, a behavior issue. I think we really have to, I don't know if the adults in our country have done the best job at modeling this. And so we're going to have to take our children through a journey, um, that we wish we didn't have to. Um, but, um, it's going to take, uh, some, um, in, um, intentionality, um, in unlearning some, um, some things and learning some new ones. So that's our approach.
Okay, thank you very much. I do plan to vote for it and I wear my mask when I'm out and about. But I guess I would ask that once you come up with clearly what are additional pieces of information for this, that you provide that to the board, and I'm hoping by July thirteenth, you would be able to share with us what those, um, you know, it's probably not going to be policies, but it'll probably be more procedural from the district standpoint so that we can see that.
Yeah, it may actually be closer to the August meeting, um, only because we, uh, I've asked our staff, our admin team to be off from the second through the ninth to rest. Um, so it may be closer to the August meeting. So it would definitely be before school starts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gotti. Mr. Perlman, your hands raised?
Uh, yes, just a, a couple of questions. I, I think I probably know the answer to them, but I just want to, want to be sure. Um, is there any chance at all that the, uh, district could have any funds withheld, um, from the state for requiring masks as is being done to, uh, local municipalities?
No, we cleared that up. There was actually an article that ran in the, uh, World Herald, um, um, as well, because they wanted to, uh, know that. Um, this money is, um, the CARES Act money that is given to, uh, schools is, uh, through its, um, through title. Um, and it, it follows a similar path, um, um, as title. And so that's not a, um, not a, uh, a worry for us at this time. Thank you for asking and raising that. Thank you.
Yes, yes. I'm, I'm a, a big mask believer, as are the scientists and the doctors. Uh, my other question is, um, will, uh, student resource officers be enforcing mask wearing?
I have, we haven't gotten that far and our, we, we don't, um, we're, we, we see it as a, the job of everybody who's in a school. They are in a school, so it, it's, um, important for everybody to model and important for everybody to hold each other accountable. Um, we do not plan on arresting children for not wearing a mask and, uh, nor suspending them. Um, but we will require masks. So, um, it's as, as strong a message as we can make. We're going to see how that goes. And, um, like I said, we're going to work with a team of, of high school. Uh, I'm an old high school principal. I know how intractable some young people can be, uh, about, about some of this, but so can the adults. And so we've got some work to do with our adults first, and then we'll start working on our children.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Cassidy.
Thank you. I just have one additional comment. I know it's getting late and we're all ready to probably be done for the night, but I just want to echo what Dr. Logan said about the adults and the lack of, I guess, leadership on wearing masks. It will be a challenge for our students. We all know that. It's a challenge for adults. These masks are hot. They get irritating. We all know the drill. But I am very proud that our district has taken the initiative to purchase these masks and require them of our students and take the responsibility seriously. And I am excited that we will be the leaders for some of these adults that have not yet gotten on board with the health officials in our area and the health officials across the country that have stressed the importance of wearing masks. I know personally as a parent, it is highly irritating when I take my own children out. I make them wear a mask and there's no one else wearing one. It is highly irritating and it is a moment that you have to turn into a teachable moment with your own children. So I just want to commend us. I think that we should be proud of ourselves that we are going to pave the way and we are going to teach a lot of adults out there how it's done.
Well said.
Just, just a sec, just, just a sec, Mrs. Crackey. Uh, Mr. Snow, uh, Mrs. Crackey has a comment. She's on my phone, so hopefully.
I figured you raised your hand. I was, I was thinking it had to be Mrs. Crackey.
Yep.
Mrs. Crackey, the floor is yours.
When we were on the calendar issue, but I did want to go back and make a statement about that. With the three-week lapse in going back to school, your, many of your students who are really conscientious and, and getting all fabulous brains, they get really uptight after having to go three weeks and then going back and re-studying all their material to make sure that they are on board and going to do a good job. So I think that's really difficult to come back and take your test. I know at the college level, it, it does the same thing to them. They usually get the semester done and then they have to break. And so I'm sorry that we have this in front of us like that. And that was a comment that I think is probably understood by others. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Crackey. Mr. Perlman, I'm assuming your hands are still accidentally raised?
Alrighty. Sorry, I didn't realize I had to put my hand down, so it's down.
Understand. I do believe, uh, Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Gotti.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Perlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Nine aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, um, uh, members of the college of the board as well as staff, uh, that, that joined us tonight, as well as many of our viewers. I believe we had over seventeen hundred people, uh, and families tune in to, to tonight's board meeting. Um, so.
Seventeen hundred people were watching the meeting tonight.
Yes, indeed. So moving on, uh, Dr. Holman.
Sorry, I was talking to my niece.
I moved at the Board of Educ- I moved at the Board of Education, go on the closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel pending litigation, legal advice, and real estate.
There's a motion to go on a closed session by Dr. Holman. Is there a second?
Second, Camara.
Second by Ms. Snipe. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Perlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Nine aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Um, let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interests and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel pending litigation, legal advice, and real estate. Let the record reflect the board winning the closed session at ten twenty. So colleagues, it's, uh, it's, it's going to take a second. I think it takes them like a minute or so to.
Peaceful time. I love the dog during July.
So funny.
He just sits there all night.
It doesn't bother him?
Well, he's scary. He won't go outside, but he just kinda hangs out inside 'cause he's scared.
Oh, poor guy.
That's why you should get a cat.
It's better than the barking outside at every single person that walks by.
Mark!
Yes.
Where's my cat food?
Oh, I have it. Let me know when you're back, uh, and I'll bring that cat over to you.
I will. Thank you.
All right, I think we're back. Let me just wait a minute here.
I don't trust cat people.
You don't trust cat? Whoa!
We're taking care of a stray cat. It doesn't come to my house.
I know that. I knew that was gonna get Mark all riled up.
All right, we're back on.
I'm kidding.
We'll have to, we'll have to talk later. Um.
I got a cat. My girl died.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Uh, let the record reflect the board came out of closed session at ten forty-two. Uh, meetings adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Okay, good night, everybody.
Thank you.